Very good. We'll now call the City Council's Special Meeting for Order for January twenty seventh, six P M. Please rise to the invocation and pledge a belief.
All right, with me. Fatherly, thank you for the opportunity to serve you tonight, Lord. Lord, we just ask that you be strong with great wisdom upon us, Father. Best you continue to keep us safe, Lord. Best you continue to drive this COVID virus out of this country, Father, with good. Lord, we just ask that you heal everyone who's been afflicted, Father, and bless their families, Lord. Jesus' name and grace. Amen.
I am the President of the United States of America. In the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let me see. Madam clerk, you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember Gray here. Councilmember Sullivan here. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We are here tonight to take a look at a proposal and presentation of a P three deal between the Florida Airport Management for FAM and the City of Avon Park. First, I'd like to thank the E D C, specifically Megan, for bringing this deal to us and all the hard work that she's put in over the years for Avon Park. We appreciate it very much. We do have J T here with FAM and his staff. They're going to be sitting at the dais there answering any of our questions. We do have a PowerPoint presentation as well. A few people on Zoom might be chiming in. Anyone in the audience, as I said before, if you wish to speak, there is a sign up sheet there right outside of the door. Please put your name and address on there so we can get you in queue. At this time, I'll, I'll open it up to the presentation. J T, take it away.
All right. Thank you all for being here today, councilmen and women, to listen to our proposal and work with us as we try to really incubate something special. So. If we can go page by page, yes, you want? The councilmen and women have a, have a chance to look this over?
Yep. We have.
Just a question, the one that was denied is the same one that we have in our package?
Yes, ma'am. So we have Florida Airport Management, we should engage the City of Avon Park in a public partnership. So that we can, you know, I gave you guys white papers that are previous meetings. Structured. But yeah, we'd love to partner with you guys, with agricultural cities and counties so that we can bring added value, information on urban technologies and emergency services. For our parent company, nine thousand three bottle, quality biofuel, bio-based polygene factory system program approval, that was granted to us in twenty twenty by U S D A. We can use that credit enhancement to help further the construction capital. Another unique partnership will be for us to incorporate our teams of expertise and experience, bring specialized emergency services by training, emergency supply station, and emergency supply school. We offer a synergistic model that integrates community needs for long-term economic growth, safety, quality life, recovery. In our family, all these locations are typically set in rural communities and maintain natural place with existing cultural and property law, providing residents with privacy and roaming access. This helps accommodate the city requirements to deliver effective and efficient infrastructure. And FAM strive to work in accordance with. We made all parts of the liberal performance balance, incorporating new technologies into the land state. Those are the merits of the cluster, continue preservation of these valuable communities. Yeah, we also wish to engage, I mean, we've been at this for a while, although the parent company had FAM. So we have our strategic partnerships, which is one way out with universities nationally and even worldwide, that we bring some of the technology to Avon Park. You know, in the packets that we handed out earlier, I wanted to provide more credibility. We have Jeff Williams on, who is Director of Toronto Brown, who is very importantly part of the local people who understand our community here, but also wanted to share the expertise that we bring with this partnership. Now, in addition to what we can do with this design, build, finance, operate, management team, our consortium of companies with, with our emergency services bases, and again, our parent company, A H M, will continue to build the resources and lay the foundation for community, service providers, farmers, landlords, fostering innovation, dogs, emerging technologies, and along with other veteran old business departments, get the farmers processed, coming together to commercialize the seed crop. So next page is the graphic of, you know, why we want to partner with the City of Avon Park and bring our stakeholders here. And then on page five, you know, I think what really ties this all together is the amount of jobs that we're trying to bring to the City of Avon Park and the region. You know, outside of the development, construction jobs, they won't be able to do it. We're kind of using the model of the U S D A that every new acre, industrial hemp planted, generates three new jobs. So within this region alone, as of December, those are people who would love to adopt permanent, which will be less than three thousand. And then, of course, as we continue to grow and commercializing the personalized technologies, we'll have to hire workers to put those dogs back. Uh, page seven, it's kind of just a quick, you know, expands intentions. Uh, yeah, sorry. An elk call on them. Yeah. We, we noticed that you have the old Blue Lawn building out there that has been damaged by hurricane trauma. We always like to repurpose and reuse any time we get a chance to have a review. So through our attention, we'll bring our parent company in and improve out the technologies with lighters, which will be the dominant ones of the market. While we further develop larger manufacturing facilities, get the better service of the region. No, last page, or page takes the right time, right place, right project. There's a lot of opportunities, however, I know we're talking about all the reasons with that and with our unique model of how we approach this, the opportunities are quite many. So. Y'all already looked at this and. So instead of running out there and making a view privately, knowing the time, but we are. Obviously, there's a special focus to the city, which is why we're here. You guys intend to, I don't know. Any way we can sign on to it?
I'm trying to figure out who it is that's doing.
Well, Chris Cassidy. And so.
So I think we all agree that, that the product could potentially be a good thing. Obviously, we want to create down for our farmers out there, we know the script with stickers. Question is, can we, can we come to an agreement? And is it preferable to the City of Avon Park as well, for you guys and all the farmers involved? So with that, I was hoping to have the questions from the council.
Well, I do have this with you regarding the organizational structure of the company. You say that the parent company is A H M?
Yes.
And who are they?
That is American Hemp Manufacturing, and those are the, that's the difficulty that we were working with nine thousand three bottle, bio, bio, bio-based polygene factory.
And how long have they been in business?
Since we incorporated this, right when Governor Sanders moved his property to the state, so about five days before we were in the state.
Yeah, I'm friends with him, it's been in the last year?
Two months, yeah. We moved from it, uh, twenty nineteen.
And so, and Aces is who?
Same entity, same entity.
Okay, so A, A H M is the mothership.
Correct.
And then you're a spin off? I mean, you're not a spin off, but you're a subsidiary of A H M.
That's correct.
All right, so all of you guys are, were born eight months ago?
No, two years, July, June twentieth, twenty nineteen.
Do you have any other projects similar to this one? Or any other hemp locations like this that are in, in full operation?
Uh, no, ma'am, but one of our board of directors was a licensed food manufacturer. And that was over there. We got that roughly a year ago. But with a, you know, this, like after this, we, in this new industry, nobody's got this figured out yet, not even nationally. And that's why we really depressed the U S D A, and tried to work and coordinate with them, and they recognized us as the very first builder of that hemp company, two days ago in the U S system. So we managed to do that since two thousand twenty nineteen.
Okay, I was just gonna wonder, I know that Megan is here, and maybe you all can answer this together, is the county providing any kind of tax payments or grants or anything for this project?
We haven't got into that yet because we haven't secured the location.
Okay, so if you're gonna be providing jobs, is, is there going to be a D E O type of grant that was provided similar to what you're seeing, asking Megan to go over it?
I'm seeing a shaking of the head, no.
No, there, as far as you know, any tax payments from the county that would sponsor or provide any other input? Yep. You know, I don't recognize you with a mask, I'm popping the girl in the corner, and I the same here. I'm sorry.
Hi, Megan DiGiacomo. I have plenty of comments for the record. If the project were to have a location, and then you whether it's our pitch, we want to approach the industrial development authority for a tax aid program, they could, and you would go through that application process for a time commitment, but they have not secured the location yet, they haven't started any sort of application, but they can do that. And then they could apply any sort of other funding, but there is no longer the governor's dollar program like there was in the recent year of how funded this year to D E O.
So you're taking your chances on whether or not, so if that didn't come through, what do you think the chances are that the county would provide some type of tax payment?
The tax payment is performance based, so they would commit to a certain number of operations, they do annual paperwork that shows the compliance to that, and if they get it, then there's a D E payment, if they don't, they'll.
So question, I, I know on your chart here, you have several little columns of, of job creation, and, um, you know, it has, I don't know, five years. On, and you're looking at just under twenty people in the first year of, I, I'm guessing twenty eight-ish or so, because, you know, the graph is kind of by tens. But in years three, four, and five, they're all the exact same thing. It, it looks like at year three, you're gonna be fully operational with employees, talking out at about just less than sixty?
So that is under the game gym model.
Under what, I'm sorry?
American hemp model.
Okay.
It's very difficult to determine what the job will be at in three to five years because we're doing such a growth reduction, concordication, if we give them to five restaurants and bathrooms, and then our mild for the ways. And so we didn't want to over guess either who we're expecting to be at, because in any new industry, there, I mean, we have to look at the supply chain, and that's gonna develop organically.
And those jobs would be right here in Avon Park at the airport?
Yes, ma'am.
Every single one, they're all full-time jobs?
Yes, ma'am.
And what would the average wage be?
I think the average wage, we currently have around eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand dollars for just under sixteen people per person?
Correct. Yeah.
So that seems like a really high skilled individual.
Oh, yeah, we'll have biochemists on board, everything down to, you know, labor, but in a lot of these, they're not, uh, any wage under fifteen dollars.
So do you foresee hiring local people?
Oh, yeah, we already have started engaging local people from, you know, looking for people, you know, I mean, besides, I mean, our entire H Q. And now we, 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 we're, 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 we're a serious success.
So are we gonna be able to see any kind of financials from you to calibrate that, you know, what you're saying that we'll be able to do is like financial statements or business plans? I mean, I know that this is conceptual and, and conceptual presentation, and I know it's a moving target to that end, but I'm just wondering about financial statements that would validate the jobs, because it's just my feeling that, you know, if we do this, that we also have to tag jobs to this, because if the county ends up not doing any abatement based on jobs, then, then we can do something like that. I don't wanna double hit you on both sides, but I'd really like, since this is a partnership with the county, for the county to step up as well. So if this is something that's gonna work, then I, I figure out, out of some level of sponsorship from the county. That's just the personal opinion of mine. Uh, but other than that, uh, that's it for now, because, I mean, I just wanted to know that part, I just want one more thing. Can you describe, okay, I come to work at the airport in two thousand and twenty four. Describe my day as I walk in, and where do I see?
Uh, you'll see the existing N B O term goal, hopefully we're gonna improvements and hopefully the partnership breaks not for low personnel. And then you're just a guest now, probably the extent of the tour. If you are working under the emergency services, you might be there, you might be the National Department, the Governor, and you work this out, we have the submitted master plan for Avon Park, the Governor's office, the Senate President, and the Speaker of the House. And so a lot of even what we're talking about here is very, it's not, even though we have a strategic path in place, there's milestones that we have to get to. And so I can't speak on behalf of the E D M here today, I can't speak on behalf of ethnically, but I know what the needs and the academic leadership is, we're supposed to talk about that. And we are stepping up to the academic leadership.
You had talked during our, our meeting, and I know all of this individually, but I recall, and it was kind of brief, you know, I, I only saw page seven or eight of it, I didn't see the whole thing. So from what I gathered and read just in the last few days, I'm gonna bring the plot rolling here. In terms of the, I guess we'll just let everyone else kind of talk in, because I gotta, I'm trying to force it in my head here.
I got a couple.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Ready, you wanna say something?
No, go ahead.
I just, first of all, I wanna say thank all of you for being here. When we met, I guess a little month ago, I was, I was very excited. I look forward to bringing new industries to our community, and, you know, some of these people I depend on, I depend, so I'm, I'm looking for the City of Avon Park to grow as far as business, as far as the fact that you want us to be a partnership, I would think that he would be able to share a little profit. I had, had not heard of the product, just kind of go over a couple of comments, some items that I yelled out on the term sheet that I read that. Let me say this, I'm not an attorney in any shape or form, so obviously we're not either trying to look over that contract, but some of these comments are, I'm reading in the term sheet of the public. On the building construction, the title of such a building, you let the vice, you know, the name of the facility, or if you want to build a building or building on our airport, our airport, then you wanna own the building for, for, and that doesn't make sense to me, so I'm not gonna read that at all. Anytime during the theme, during the term, you're allowed to sign, leave, transfer, anything to any other industry. So you can actually run out the property of somebody else, and there again, you will make the profits, though, but the city doesn't make the profits from that. Says here, you manage the airport, and you see fit. It doesn't necessarily say that you're gonna hire a professional fuel base operator, or who that person is, and how long they will stay, and where they came from, what the qualifications are, and if there's some reason to get out of the league, would they continue to stay and run the airport towards without walking away one day? Because there's all these things in here, I don't see why they pay the city at all. City of Avon Park was born a day at the time of COVID, almost creating a ton of money playing for the airport. I mean, it seems to me like you want to get the farmer, like, I don't mean to try to be funny about this, but it's just, I don't see where we, the City of Avon Park itself benefits from this. You wanna open up a business on our property for a dollar a year, and then you're going to turn around and make all the profits from that, and the city makes nothing.
I give my.
I like to say this real loud, and that's, I like to say my point. Said that you can sublease it and pay rent to it unless, unless you, well, if you do get a renter, then, and you leave, then I guess they'll pay us rent, that's a good idea. And it also says, Avon Park still provides FAM, leaving them on this, for ninety days. I think we had asked a question about that before, and you didn't say you were gonna pay her because she's gonna be a city employee, so the City of Avon Park is paying for that person to work with you up to ninety days. There again, money coming out of our pocket. The development assets, we are clear of all links and liabilities, and that the ground power is showing the name of town of Avon Park. But so, we'll, we get to keep the property that the city will. During the lease, the city will sign a city representative, and there again, we talked about, I think somebody's out of mind. One thing that's really disturbing for me, more than anything else, is the fact that you actually wanna get a C R A fund of a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars put in your pocket for you to run the airport. I just, I, I don't see how this is a way to run to the airport in any shape or form. I mean, it's not like we leased it to you for a dollar a year, what you asked for. We're selling it to you for a dollar a year, for you to figure out the business that may make millions of dollars, and you don't want to see the profits from that at all. Other than the fact that some of our local farmers, I think it may be a great deal, and I know that some of them need help, like those that have on, on growth, but I don't see any guarantees where you're gonna hire any vital people, like engineers from Avon Park, or other employees, I just don't think they, in any shape or form, this is a benefit for the City of Avon Park, and it's taxpayer. It's all giving you our property to run the business as you please, run the airport as you please, and you get all the profits, and we don't get a share of that. Me, that's not a partnership. And like I said, I'm not a lawyer, but I definitely will make emotional time comes that we hire a lawyer or negotiator, because this has to be a partnership where the city makes money, not just you. So like I said, this is something that needs to be discussed, and I'm not ready to move forward with this. As, as the terms are here, excuse the pun again, it doesn't apply with this. That's my good.
So you got a few things in there, aren't we? Give them up there to respond, who we can give a little bit of, very good. Yeah, thank you, good. And there's several questions, so can we go through each question that you asked? So.
First of all, with the building construction and the ownership of the building, that's the.
So, okay, so.
Before you start, can I ask, is the purpose of tonight's meeting to say, okay, if we are gonna do this, after we cash out this question, or are we gonna say, we're interested in this, we need a further investigation?
Entirely other than council, whatever you say.
You know, let me just say something, I kind of like to feel with, with Jim, as, as hiring somebody, I'm not a lawyer, and I, and I read this, and I know question marks and highlights and everything, all the way down to page number five, what he's talking about.
Really, before we get more questions, what?
I just wanna make a statement.
But they, they need to start answering the questions before they lose sight of everything that they could.
He asked three questions, but he's supposed to ask one and let him respond. So we're gonna stop that right there.
I believe what I can hear is you have.
Yeah, I just wanna say I want to welcome you guys, and I do believe that this is good for Avon Park, but however, and it will bring jobs to Avon Park, I think, but however, I think we should get a, an attorney to look at, to negotiate this contract or this agreement before he comes to us, and let us, you know, the, the person that we hire, talk to us about it, what's the best thing for the City of Avon Park? Because me, just reading this, and looking at it, I've got questions for any of you, but I'm not gonna answer.
So we couldn't get that process started before it got to.
I got you, I understand this.
You have, you have to start some of them.
I understand that, so let's start by, they, this organization has presented their term, you need somebody to present answers.
Right, and we currently have three questions on the floor, so they're gonna give them this question an opportunity to be answered, who's asking you about the building construction and the ownership of the building.
Okay, so there's a couple things to that. When we, whether we're leveraging private dollars or public dollars, it's gonna fall on two different levels. Absolutely, if it's public funds or the D O T, it's a structured one, those titles should remain with the City of Avon Park. We are responsible to build the building on behalf of the City of Avon Park, but because that was the public money that should stay from the property. The other half is if we, if we paid out all the funds to build it, it gets tariffed, we too entitled for what we spend. And then the, the two things merge here is, even if I was building a regular commercial property, residential REE was, and I need to get a construction firm, so I would, you know, a local bank, you, the, the lenders have to uncover that ability, and have some sort of lien interest on that, and so if we do not have the market title, or the ability to uncover those properties, we're really limited in financing capabilities, or how fast we can build that building. Whether it's for our needs or for future tenants to come in, or due for needs and need to handle that, so it's our responsibility to build that property for it. Sure, we can, you know, put up funds with the D O T, and that's the reason why the city representative is very important, is because as a credit enhancement matrix, the whole, you know, if you boil down, why it makes sense for qualified people is because there, there's expertise and lending capabilities that I can do as a private equity of the city. Exactly, you know, I can't go to the D O T, give infrastructure funding, I mean, next week, we have a new secretary of health, CFO, CFO, already talking about bond initiatives that we're trying to bring to your, there's a lot of time and money, but those are the priorities, and, you know, that risk is, is for us, us, five years, instead of the City of Avon Park having to hire a lot of new dollars, go out, have these, figure out how, how, or, you know, what is a strategic approach for the best outcome? And so, to some, the ownership, either they have to be able to uncover the property, and supporting to it with, if it's public funds, I mean, it remains with the city, park ownership, private funds, I mean, total air force, it's fair to let whoever.
Can I just up here off that one particular question? You're saying that the city has buildings that are out there that are ours, and then you build your own, you wanna do your own, but how are you, what do you need to do repairs and improvements to our buildings? I mean, if you have a lease for fifty years, likely something's gonna break. So, you know, would you be responsible to repairing that on four, nine, and then would we have to take you back at some point? I can. Uh, yes, we are responsible for all the maintenance. This contract is a design, build, operate, and destroy finance, so anyone from that industry is responsible. But if you make improvements and things, and let's say you enhance it to where it is, you know, bigger, or has more, more bells and whistles to it and stuff, are, is that gonna be something that if you pack up a left in fifty years, are we gonna have to give that to you as well? I mean, is that gonna be created in your asset count?
So, yeah, so that's, we covered the program right up in the offset, and then long term, long linked agreement. The, uh, this is how we requested that all transfer titles be included of all means, we have to transfer that free and clear of all these. So it's, it's not fair for us to, I mean, and even if we, you know, even if it was with holy, you know, sideways loans, I mean, that's the, the, of the bio, 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 we've got money secured. So now, together, we have about four different funds to, uh, finance, we have grants, we have infrastructure funding, we have revenue bonds, we'll, we'll, we'll have accident, and we'll have our U S D loan businesses. So there's two very, you know, incredible options, we all have the same financial vehicles we have in the play.
Jim has some other questions that we're.
I believe your next question had to do with the transfer of leases? Yeah. Basically, when I read it, you can tell by the line, but basically, everyone that is running property out there now, that's not only maintaining property, but you also collect the rent, is that correct?
Yes, that's good. So one other question that I brought to you when we talked over a month ago, was the fact that I see this as a possible multi-million dollar company, and so why do you not wanna share the profits of the State of Park? I've never structured a deal to where there is, I guess, does mean, can be something, but now. I've never structured a deal to where there is, I guess it does mean, maybe something, but now, you know.
Well, I'm saying, if you're making millions of dollars, I think you can. And knowing that you're giving us a dollar a year while you're also making millions of dollars on our property that you're managing, it just doesn't seem fair to the taxpayers. It's basically like we're giving, we're selling you the airport and you can just leave wherever you want and then we take it back. It just doesn't seem right to me. I just think that, uh, I, I like your idea, I like the energy, I like some of the people that I know personally here that I think are positive. But we're talking about the taxpayers on that airport out there. Not anybody up here that talks about we're all taxpayers. I think we need to receive some of those warrants with your profits. I mean, because you're, what you're showing us here, I mean, you, you're showing us like, you're a multi-million dollar company already. And you know, bringing scientists to come on and talk for it, it's like, you know, I, I wanna see something that we're gonna give to all the profits. So, I mean, crawl along. Uh, and my response to that would be, and that's one of the reasons why I brought all the resumes from two years ago today. I, I understand y'all have a contract with Kimmy Moore and I think the average hour consulting rate is about three hundred dollars. With Kimmy Moore. Now, we charge, the city of Avon Park, three hundred dollars now for our twenty-four acres of brand name, which is quite impressive. That, I mean, it's not a sustainable business because the city of Avon Park would have to pay us over a million dollars a year. So, so the, uh, front risk is not a problem about the city, the front risk is controlled by our budget.
I believe Kimmy Moore is one hundred percent paid by, by, um, FAA and F D R T grants that I'm aware of. Know that we have consulting with them, there's no contract, and then we run our airports.
If we wanted.
Well, we're right, I mean, if we wanted to do that, I'd like to answer that. We're, we're a development company and we will bring businesses, dogs, and as far as the revenue potential for the, the city, that would be of the tax benefit. And, uh, getting from all the, um, public taxes and the new business that we come. We foresee that this is a business that we receive options from the products that we would be producing. No one's city is gonna be able to, to process the amount to make this a commercialized product in the state. Um, everywhere we go, we have a two hundred, two hundred miles processing. So we're looking for our first home and to save the cost. Really just get this clear, is a processing plant that you wanna have out there as well?
Yeah, so.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, you need definitely land and stuff there. And I know that we had talked about this when we met, that there's more land at the airport that's outside of the bounds that you've included here. That's raw land and it has access to six four, that's county access because that's county property of a budding highway six four. So it wouldn't have to come in through the main gate per se of the airport. Have you all considered looking at that? And on top of that, how come, I'm just curious, why wasn't this a proposal to us as a business coming in and wanting to lease land? And say, hey, we've got this, can you give us a hang or can you work something else out and consider happy airport rather than the whole thing? Um, it's my contention that you need the cash flow from our rentals, our leases and stuff in order to do your business model to have this big cash. I am aware that you were not aware of the CRA funding we met and you became aware of that fund once you got the paperwork from the city. So that wasn't even something that needed off from that, from the get-go. That didn't happen until after the fact, and that's true.
So I was.
And the reason why, I think it doesn't matter because, I mean, the CRA, it would have to go through the CRA if I free form, they have a plan and this is not in their, in their plan. Which is one of the hurdles that we have. We've been told time and time again that whatever is done with CRA funds has to be in their plan and this is not in their plan. So we have to amend our CRA plan. Um, did the advisory board gonna have the opportunity to do this? Because it's supposed to go through the process of letting the advisory board, you know, talk about this as well. You know, are we just going to, you know, as a CRA board, we're meeting tonight as a council on the CRA.
They're all valid questions, I think.
Yeah.
If you had a top ten list, that's.
No, I know, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is there's a lot of what ifs. And, um, because of that, it just seems like we can agree that we might pursue this tonight, but I don't.
Which I think that's the.
Yeah, but I mean, I know we're just going detail, detail. I'd like to ask the manager, what has been done in terms of finances from the city's angle to see what it is that we no longer would have in our budget?
In our budget, uh, can I go back first about the CRA? Because when this first came in and Gary and I discussed it, we just had to go and start stuff in there. It didn't make sense to us or whatever, but I believe the CRA came up when they talked to Danielle. Um, so I don't think that they just found it in any of the, um.
No, what I'm saying was, it wasn't discussed with us, or at least not with me when we met with them. So if they met with Danielle after they met with us, then that money appeared after that. Look, and you're asking me to think, one hundred and forty-nine thousand isn't a big amount of money? But it is pretty much all they have in reserves for the CRA and if they had some plans for that, then that's, that's on.
Right, and I agree, and I said to them, I don't see, I mean, I said, first of all, I don't know if that's legal, but the first time I saw it in there. And that shouldn't be on the table, because that's one of them that we saw in there, so I didn't really talk to Gary about it. But I just wanna be straight that when they sat down with Danielle and you did a great job, just give them extra information, that came up. So that's how they got, we just find them on, I, I don't think I'm trying to take CRA.
I know you didn't find out.
Because that's the first thing I questioned when I saw that, I said, where the heck did that come from?
Yeah, but I'm just saying CRA is a different entity than us. I mean, we are the CRA board because the advisory board that has the, you know, that makes the recommendation to the mothership. And tonight we're meeting as a council, not as a CRA.
Right, well, just to be clear, I thought, I was under the impression that there's only about three of the CRA, uh, identities left in the state. And then there was mention of resolving, so.
There are hundreds of CRA in the state.
Uh, I know, specifically drafted like this one. I'm not sure, because I haven't done this already, but I was actually just trying to be helpful.
Okay.
None, so.
Okay, so I'm just saying, that component for tonight has to go in front of the CRA advisory board. We just happen to have a meeting that's coming up on the eighth, that's a meeting, that would be the perfect opportunity for them to be aware of it.
Don't remember the areas.
You know, in the meantime, can we agree to that, we need, um, talk about, um, getting someone to look at this before it comes back on the date?
Yeah, I think the objective here is to, like you're saying, obviously take out a way forward that we wanna go. So at this point in time, the council has not met, yet sure we've been individually, which doesn't mean a whole heck of a lot. So we had to meet as a board to even under, let these people understand if we're even wanting to go forward at all. So we can't even have a hammered out deal in any way, shape, or form until we've met as a board. We haven't been able to do that until tonight. So, don't get caught up in trying to hammer out every last word.
No, not, but I'm just, what I was trying to do was.
We're kind of thinking mile high.
Right, I'm just trying to make sure that we know that CRA is separate from us and that requires another meeting with another group, two of their members are here tonight. And, um, it's, it's a process, so.
And, and maybe it's, maybe it's not, maybe it has to incorporate, maybe it doesn't, we don't know that.
Well, okay, I had another question, though. In part of your documentation that said here that at some point, um, F D O T grants and FAA grants would come to you first, coming to us? And that you would monitor those and you would, whatever you wanted with those funds?
No, no.
No?
No, so, in the credit enhancement matrix that we've tried to spell out in the major agreement is any time we pursue a grant, uh, for, at, at any, with a, or state DOT. We have to collaborate, we do that with the city. And we still, whether y'all do it or whether we do it, there's still a grant guideline that has to be followed. And so, the, the way that I first saw this is that you would subordinate that to us because they're, they're still gonna warrant that money to the city of Avon Park. They're not gonna cut you that down, we still have to go y'all and then let us execute that grant on behalf.
But according to agreement, you have, they have nothing to say about it, what you do whatsoever. So you get the money and you do what you want, so that's the, I mean.
So in our, in our contract, we have by and will, we would actually put a plan together, we'd do nothing would be done under, under, you know, without you guys.
I see, I see the discussion about the self-infronting agreement. But overall, it says, we have nothing to say about it whatsoever. That is, like I said, in a number of classes, legally speaking, I know it's crazy, so maybe I should preface, but I'm saying legally speaking. The city of Avon Park has to follow whatever the guidelines are of the grant issuer anyways. So it doesn't need to mean that the city of Avon Park can do what they want. If the FAA or A I P wants to give us two million dollars to extend the runway, that checklist has to be made whether we go to the city or.
But that checklist is made by this council. We are the ones that say what we need, the consultants come in and say, you're disqualify, this is bad, you need to fix this. Here's your five-year plan, you give that five-year plan and then that's how the state funds, and that's how they program their money. So all of those things, I don't know what's in the queue right now, Danielle may know, I'm kind of looking online and I couldn't find anything for Avon Park for the next five years. But I know we have a C I P that has that. So our current C I P matches whatever it is that the DOT have, FAA has. So when you come in, you're saying that those items that we have pre-selected with the DOT and FAA will be altered based on your needs?
No.
No?
No.
So then you're gonna continue to enhance everything at the airport? Then the one question I have with that is, if you're going to be the ones that do all of that, then would you be the one that procure also the contractor and the, um, engineering and all of that?
All that's our responsibility.
And how, what is your procurement? I mean, how would you go about that? Do you have another company that's a contracting company or engineers on, on staff?
Uh, within our leadership, yes.
So you would, you would farm it out to your own company to do the engineering and we don't, we would get a consultant, we would add those, those grants. So we would, yeah, we would do a concept development plan, we would take it up to schematic and we would hand it off to a local architect or engineer. Okay. Because that local architect or engineer is one of the, uh, building, boat department. So that would be. So the, the contract itself that the DOT provides pays for all of that? So is that how you would get paid to do that, would be out of that grant?
If, if, if we did the work in-house, yes, I mean, if we can't, as an entity, expected we can do all the engineering.
No, what I'm trying to figure out is just how global you are. I mean, if you have a contractor on board and engineers on board, or you're gonna consult with someone that's gonna come in and attend night with you. Then all the money from the grant stays with you and the intent of that grant is to share that money with different businesses and create jobs.
Yes.
And we've got the FAA and F D O T premises and we go through a bidding process and it goes to the lowest bidder. How do we know that you're not gonna use the lowest bidder to do a project that, that is owned by the city? And in other words, when the runway gets done, how do we know you're not gonna go with the lowest bidder if you're the ones doing the procurement?
So lowest bidder or highest bidder, we still have, uh, building standards. So I would say that whatever the cost, whatever the capital outlay is to that improvement, we still have to go get building instructions, that is still in. Everything still has to be, you know, total requirements.
And so it would be DOT FAA managed because it has to be in compliance with their contract, right? Okay, so then their contract says that you have to go to bid.
If it's grant and we have to go through a three bid, then yeah. If it's, if it's our own main factory, that we, we raise our own money, then no. Go out there with a hammer, uh, build it, but yeah, so it's public funds, that's what was all set, not by the.
Okay, then the other thing is, um, I forgot what page it is, I think it's page twenty-two of our master plan or something. There's a section in there about grant insurance is that, um, if the city were to allow the airport to be privatized. That there could be a chance that the city would be on a hook for all previous expenses that were incurred through grants that were provided to the city. In other words, four million dollars that the F D O T provided us over the course of the last ten years, we gotta pay that. Um, I spoke to Wendy Sands today from F D O T District One and she told me that specifically. I tried to get ahold of Miguel Martinez of that, um, Orlando office, he was unavailable. But then I got ahold of a gentleman that was the lead in the air glades project, which is a privatization job in Harney County, I'm sorry, Henry. And, um, the source of information, it took them over three years to go through contracting and approvals with the FAA and the F D R T to privatize that airport.
Let me ask you a question, this airport wouldn't be privatized or is this a private issue?
No, it's not right. That's why.
But if it's a partnership, there's a cost here.
So, I mean, I mean, very challenging to build value with black and white. I did a value at a state insurance team, probably got work in that. The city of Avon Park, that would not be sustainable if you don't have a proper management. And here it is, right, and through bringing in the industry, and to secure the government's property on behalf of the city, right? So when you talk about, go back to a dollar a year, not a dollar a year. That's, that's the amount of value that we have to put, both financial and human capital, right? There, there's twice the benefit, so. But it, but it's, how's that value come back? If you're, if you're gonna sell the asset back to the city at the end of the fifty years? And if we don't like the fair market value, you can sell it to somebody else and that's the contract to this. Yes, and I'm kind of with this here, it's privately raised money, right? We give it to you for a dollar and sold factors, the fair market value.
But we built the value.
Doesn't sound like a hard to pay. Let me, let me back up a second. Free, so to go to privatization, this is not a privatization. The FAA will get a seven hundred fifty thousand dollars just to go through preliminary schematics, drawings, designs. And they'll give that to you bet for the privatization, but then it can be a two to ten year process. So, we're, this is not privatization. On the capital improvements, it's very common for the developer or the entity that constructed that to have title and ownership. To that building, that is not a common, it's just not a practice. So, so I think, uh, and that, that's why also, that's why I suggested, we really asked. Advisors in regard to this, the legal and deal.
Can I make a suggestion? I know that the FAA will require to see any contract that the city does review, whether it's now or later, but they have to review this. Because of the grant insurances and they would do it free because they are the FAA and the F D O T. And I think that moving forward, this is something that we're interested in, they would have to review this and check it at a specific fit, whether or not it falls under grant insurances and their guidelines. Because it's, if it's not a privatization, that means that you still will have public people landing at the airport and all that. So the guidelines still fall under the FAA.
But I would think you're watching, uh, questions that would be, why are we not, you know?
Well, the FAA could read that, I mean, they've got all the info that they need here. I mean, that right there would, would alleviate, right now, us having to sit there and wonder if they're gonna say, pay up? You know, to me, that's a first big step between that and, and, and the CRA, which is a smaller portion of the funding, but yet they're also wanting to carve out the airport from the CRA district. Was that something that I read correctly in here? That, you know, that you wanted the plastic aluminum separated outside, you didn't want any of the other properties?
To remove plastic, laying in building and the wall.
Right, which is all the CRA district. So you're, you're changing the boundary of the CRA, which changes the tax increment funding for that as well. And we all know that the park doesn't provide any funding, only plastic aluminum does. So if that's the case, there's no more CRA money for the airport. So, and that, you know, that, that's that. So is that the way we wanna go, do we wanna part it out? So I think that's a separate issue.
I think they would have been okay with that. Seems as how they were not asking for that at the beginning.
Well, yeah, it was after the fact, some people think the difference, but it comes back to the current CRA. We have two advisory board members that represent the airport on our CRA board and, you know, why bother? They're not, they won't have an airport anymore per se, because it's been dominated by someone else. So do we, you know, water down the CRA board? I, I prefer not to, um, because I think it's a terrible to the city and since this is a lease, we still would have to have somebody representing there.
I think you worry about a small builder and a very large fighter.
I do, I, I agree, but it's still a piece of the pie. I think we were, okay, it's a later on. Thank you for the question. I, I think that our intent with the CRA was, we were told that it had to be split at the airport. So the best use for that money was to reskin that dilapidated building that was out there. And that's what we're gonna do, so, um, we're actually gonna fix, fix the building up there.
The new model.
The new model.
The proposal for the CRA money was a CRA project, which is, is it the CRA project that the CRA wants to see?
Well, but they also want eighty-nine thousand for the insurance that goes to that as well. So let me ask you, have we not had any of those funds to fix up that building or would you have pointed out? I thought it would be pointing out.
No, it, so, one of the governing ethos of this organization is how we find capital, uh, environmental problems. And so we will always reuse, repurpose, and reposition before we build the structure. And so, building is fun, I think it's good, it's a steel structure, concrete structure, you know, in my opinion, mine is one, uh, you know, demolish it. Even if, we don't come to terms with, you know, on this partnership, why don't the city want to? And I think that's been what's been recommended, uh, but again, still a process, so.
Yeah, and we also need a home right away. And we need a place because there's no other building that we actually move into. We don't wanna take up the space of, of the, um, of the big space operator that used to be involved with the buildings. So we thought that was the best use.
So we thought that was the best use, fastest way to get our our um ID unit and our offices.
Right.
And in two months, we would have that skinned and completed, and we'd be we'd be going.
Okay, so uh make comments before we get to the uh the sign-ups. So my idea with this is that if there's a firm that's wanting to come to us and wanting to build a lot of infrastructure at the airport, buildings, et cetera, that then eventually go back to the city, we have an assurance of regaining it. So if that could be negotiated in the contract where after the conclusion of fifty-year contract, that we get all the assets that are out there, we're guaranteed to get what's going to go to the road. So I think traditionally, that's probably how they go a lot of times, but I know a lot of uh hangers get built at the conclusion of their thirty or fifty-year lease, that hanger goes back to the mean value of the airport, and that is their assurance. Also, they go fifty million dollars of the buildings out there, in fifty years, you buy a rental. At the first market.
No, no, we we don't, I'm saying we don't buy them, they they go back to the city.
That's all contract.
I know, it's only fun. Well, so their contracts are well drafted, we love your input of the city, what we would like to see in there, and we would be fine.
I think even if you got my input already, I'm just. I it may be great, it may be worth it here, like I said, I am willing about two, three deals, um this is a darn, and you know, it's it's something usually, it's something that you've done in respect to feel before, and I I currently have to be step aside, that's something to feel that aspect of it. Because um uh you know, it's not, I I couldn't recommend it, but you know, if there's somebody who knows how how to develop and why it's good that you explained that to me, can then, you know, advise me to do so.
That's what I was saying, that um, I mean, I I appreciate the draft here, because you did draft as far as what's best for your organization. But we need someone that knows about airports and all the other good stuff, I own a car, I all know airplanes, y'all know nothing about it. Uh that have the standard bed system at heart, that's that's the only thing that I need. Because there is something, there's one thing in here where I saw where, um while we're talking about this CRA money, a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars of the one that uh being given to you all, and I was thinking about the city CRA had money, they can use some of that money to pay some of the funds back to the sanitation department that they borrowed the funds, four hundred and what, seventy thousand dollars, five years ago, all the general funds, where they borrowed three hundred thousand dollars versus giving you all the funds back. Understand what I'm saying, so this is the type thing that I'm talking about, that could be best for the the best interest of the city of Avon Park.
Before we make any motion or anything, uh we do have a sign-up, I see Rob Bull, is that the only one? We'll start with Rob, sorry about that. Please give your name and address if you will.
Rob Bull, A C S. Thank you. Um. I just want to back up this a little bit, because I've been attending CRA advisory board meetings, stick marks. And city staff is supposed to hire airport managers. And possibly even economic development manager for the city through the CRA.
This doesn't have anything to do.
Yes, this does.
But it doesn't, sir.
Because, because what I'm hearing more so is a management company wanting to manage airport. So why are we entertaining a management company managing an airport when we haven't even asked for, you know, a request for a proposal to do that? That's what I'm hearing, proposal. So.
You do understand that we did not solicitate this proposal?
I I understand that, but wouldn't you want to open it up to other other opportunities that might be out there?
Does it sound to you as though this is a closed case tonight?
No, but you're deciding whether you want to move on or not.
We're deciding if we want to question doubts. We're not deciding against anything that you just said.
Okay, has the city done any due diligence as far as finding for new businesses to the airport?
For a couple of decades, yeah.
Yeah, and at least one, once a time.
So we've eliminated options of Amazon and any other big box or car company being able to come in?
Are you volunteering to be an economic development person?
I'm not volunteering.
But you see where I'm going.
I I.
This has been, this has been a problem as long as you and I have both been alive.
I I understand that, Mr. Inge.
It's something that I've that I've campaigned on, every single time I ran, we need to get more business out. And unfortunately, it's something that we failed to do. The reason why, there's a whole host of reasons why, we've had quite a few different city managers that have come and gone, they've all had their own different policies, but one of the things that's constantly fed us is that whenever businesses do come, it's very difficult to get something that's actually executed. You know, we 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 fail to have a business that says, I need X amount of square feet, how much is it going to cost me, and I want to do this type of business to, okay, here's your lease. Now, that's something that that we struggle with the whole time. Some of that's been policy, some of it's just been lack of due diligence, but it's been an issue, because the city of Avon Park since its inception has not been a very good landlord, we're not great at renting out our property, that's why we're not very profitable on any properties that we own. Uh this this is no different. This proposal, which we did not solicit, this came to us, and that's why we're discussing it now. We didn't choose to be here tonight, they chose up, so because it's on our plate, we're going to look at it. This is not a shut case, as I told you. All the options going forward are not closed, as you can hear by the discussion, it's probably going to be a lengthy process to get anywhere if at all. So.
Can I share a little bit of my concerns, more so concerns than than on questions? You know, my concern is, even though we don't make a whole lot out there, for we do make quite a bit in revenue and fuel. We do, we make money off the fuel, we make money off the tenants, um you know, that's something that we need to take take into consideration as well, they're wanting to give us a dollar a year to manage the airport, but yet this, the city's not going to reap any benefits from that. So how is how is having them out there, they're going to bring a sixty doff, pay us a dollar a year, but how is that going to bring any more benefits to the greater city of Avon Park? How is that going to bring um businesses to downtown, how is that going to bring tourists into downtown? How is that going to bring more economic development outside of those fences of the airport? For one dollar a year?
Yeah, so the idea of them is to be developed here, because the more they develop, the more revenue they get, right? Same, the same goal as the city, the city's goal is to develop here, or at least it should be. So in the past, that hasn't happened, that's something that was wanted, and by having businesses around the city, just like having a new floor that's not technically even in Avon Park, way outside, but you're still going to get some jobs from that, you're going to get them coming to stay in Avon Park, they're going to buy things. So if you have businesses out there at the airport, just like you do in North Seabrook, you're still going to benefit from that, because they have to lose it. Drive, they have to buy something somewhere, so it's it's all, uh you know, success, you get success.
All right, I have the rest, we're actually another question, but I'm going to continue to investigate this out, stand by.